Good evening and welcome to Claussen City Council Meeting of Tuesday, January 16th. This meeting is now called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by Mayor Protem Matt Albrecht.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's right. God, you've told us that if any of us lack wisdom, that we should ask and you will give it. And so, we come before you tonight, asking for your wisdom as we make decisions tonight that will affect many others. And we ask that the right decision would be made, the best decision would be made, for the residents and businesses of this community. We ask for our emergency responders that you would give protection, spiritual, emotional, and physical protection as they carry out what they've determined to be their obligations and their jobs. And we thank you for them and we again ask that you would protect them. I pray for the employees of the city that you would provide health to them, especially during this season. We thank you for our workers who work to clear our roads and provide safe passageway for us throughout our city. We pray that tonight, that our decisions would be wise and profitable. We pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Mayor Woolley?
Here.
Councilmember Ayers?
Here.
Councilmember Malone?
Here.
Councilmember Moffett?
Present.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Here.
The first item on the agenda is a consideration of approving the Foul and Consent Agenda items. The minutes of the public hearing and special city council meeting held on Wednesday, January 3rd, the minutes of the regular city council meeting on Wednesday, January 3rd, and the purchase of one Pierce Enforcer custom pumper utilizing the Michigan Intergovernmental Trade Network purchasing group.
Madam Mayor, I move that the consent agenda be approved as listed.
Support.
Questions or discussions? I see that Rick Deleski, our fire chief, is here to discuss the fire truck purchase.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Yes, the fire department is seeking to purchase 2018 Pierce Enforcer Puck custom pumper, which would replace a 1996 Pierce Saber Pumper. We've used this truck for now 21 years. By the time we do replace it, it'll be on 22 years. And we follow the NFPA guidelines of 20 years for a life of an emergency equipment that we have. We went with Pierce by using the Mitten bid, Michigan Intergovernmental, mouthful there, trade network. And what that did is that provided for us set pricing. That would also be, if we do move forward with this, it would be our fifth Pierce. It would match the three that we already have as we replace our engine 16-4. We do receive a discount, as it was felt out, the final price of the vehicle would be $574,959. We originally budgeted and would have approved in the 2017-18 budget of prices $624,000. So, we came in quite a bit below that. And I would also seek an additional contingency fund of $10,000 to cover any additional changes or something that may have gotten missed. Every time we build a truck, there's something that arises. So, this would be if we wanted to have a custom bracket to hold our jaws, because this truck has a set of jaws. That wasn't included in this original cost, or if there was additional equipment. That doesn't mean we're going to spend the $10,000. It would just be a contingency. We've had good luck with Pierce in the past, and I see no reason to switch from that for the future. If anybody's got any questions?
I have a question. On the additional $10,000, what would be the approval process to say, hey, yeah, it's worth it for that bracket? Or making sure that, like, who would make the decision on how to spend that additional $10,000?
We would go back through the, that we have a committee, but it would be, just like we did with our rescue truck, there's a committee of guys. And basically, the decision was made, do we need this? Do we not need this? Is this the right thing to do or not? If it's not the right thing to do, we're not going to do it. We're not going to add cost in where we don't need to add cost.
If we were to approve the extra $10,000, does this need to be amended in any way?
No, it's incorporated in the motion.
Okay.
Any other questions?
When you're supposed to get delivery on, or I know you haven't ordered it yet, but... If the, well, and that was one of the things that I noted in there, if we get the order in before the end of this month, before the 31st, we don't incur an extra 3%. But right now, Pierce is saying that it's about a nine-month lead time. So, we would see this truck typically, probably around September, October, which is about the time that we normally take deliveries of our apparatus. Good. I'd say.
Are the delivery costs already included in the purchase price? Will we incur trail costs for our guys to go out and retrieve it?
No, that's...
Bring it back? Or do they deliver it this time?
They always deliver it. That is one of the requirements that we have, is that it's delivered under its own power to our door. That keeps all of the insurance. It keeps everything on either Pierce, the manufacturer, or HALT Fire, who are actually purchasing it through. Any trips, there's two scheduled trips to go out there, two Pierce to review this. Those are all included in. So, everything, what you see there on the $574, if we don't incur any other changes, then $574,959 is the actual cost.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Malone?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
The next thing on the agenda is a presentation by the Claussen Police Department for their 2018 Service Awards. I'd like to welcome Mr. Chief Anderson to the microphone.
Madam Mayor, members of council, it's my pleasure to be here tonight to recognize the efforts of our officers and a couple civilians this time. Like I've said before and you've seen, every year we, throughout the year, we have what an awards board that's in our department, made up of myself, a representative of the command unit, and a representative of the patrol unit. And right currently, it's myself and Detective Lieutenant Scott Servello and Adam Neimerkaiser, who's one of our officers. We recently met and I'll back up a little bit. The awards, anybody can make a recommendation for award throughout the year. Officers can, if they see the actions of one of their fellow officers or a citizen, can write up, we have forums that you write up and say, this is the reason this person should be nominated for this award. And once that goes, that then triggers our awards board to meet, and we discuss it and we see, well, you know, does the award have merit or doesn't it? You know, so we want to keep a value to the award. So, there are awards that come through, or recommendations that we don't go forward with an award. So, but this year, we've got some pretty good stuff going on that we're going to recognize the guys for. So, and I'm happy to talk about that tonight. The first thing we're going to, the first award that I'm going to talk about is our Officer of the Year. Each year, we select an Officer of the Year. Years ago, it was done through the Troy Claussen Elks Club would have an Officer of the Year, and that was our yearly program. That discontinued, and we thought that there was a real value to selecting an Officer of the Year. An Officer of the Year isn't based on one particular act, but a conglomeration of acts and efforts of a particular individual, basically to say, this is what a Claussen officer should be like, because of their actions, because of their, the way they behave themselves, the way they, things that they do. So, it's not just one heroic event. As you'll see, this year unanimously, Paul Dyer was selected as our Officer of the Year. Paul, come on. Officer Dyer, he's, like I said, Paul, if you know Paul, you know, he's a great guy. You can't find anybody in a department that could say anything bad about Paul. Paul is one of our midnight shifts officers, which you can see the gray look to him. So, he doesn't get out in the sun much. But he picks that shift by choice, which we have several guys that do that. He's a senior officer and he still works the midnight shift. He just loves it. Paul's a, he's described by his peers as hardworking, dependable, conscientious, considerate, and compassionate. And those are excellent adjectives that describe Paul, because I'm telling you, that's what Paul is to a T. He's, this past year in 2017, he was fourth in our arrest statistics in the department. He's got a work ethic that's second to none. He always does the extra duties and believes, he has his way of looking at, looking at the good in people and situations. So, it's kind of like, okay, well, in police work, you have a tendency of becoming pretty cynical. And it's kind of good to have somebody around that kind of levels you down and say, hey, you know, this person's not that bad. They got these positive attributes. And you can see that in his work. He has a unique sense of humor, which helps their whole shift, the midnight shift, make it through in some pretty tense situations. I know I've been on some things with Paul and I just look and I go, oh, boy, Paul, you know? And he makes a chuckle, though, and it's, you know, but he still stays serious, but he has that sense of humor. Paul has been recently trained and has recently become one of our Socket members, which is the South Oakland County Crash Investigation Team, which, as you know, it's a countywide team that is educated crash investigators. So, it's all throughout the area. If we have the members of Socket, which, Auburn Hills, Bloomfield, Birmingham, several of our surrounding jurisdictions, Troy, if you have, if there's a crash that goes on, they send, we have a call-out and they go out and they help investigate the crash. So, Claussen has actually used them this last year, and it's an excellent resource when you need it. So, Paul has recently become a member of Socket, which we have three of now. Paul also doesn't, he doesn't, there's never a lack of effort in assisting his fellow officers, including surrounding jurisdictions, which you'll hear tonight, there's an action of Paul that is worthy of another medal that happened in the city of Troy. He's always the first one to volunteer to go, regardless of what the risk is to his personal safety. Paul, he never complains about anything. Well, he does, but you never really hear it. He doesn't make it that public, you know? He just, if he does complain, it's just, eh, you know, okay. But he goes along with it. He realizes there's a job to be done, and he goes and he handles it. Our supervisors will tell you, every one of them to a T, will tell you, if they have a special detail or special assignment, they know that they can say, hey, Paul, can you do this? You know, from, if the DB needs a house looked at on a certain day, Paul will do it on midnights, or, you know, his sergeant on midnights, he can do a detail. He'll get it done and you know it's done right. So, he also has a very positive attitude when you do that. I mean, it's not like he's going away griping, saying, why does everything fall on me? He takes it gladly and cherishes it. He also is, when I've been told by several officers that work in the midnight shift with him, that it's very common for Paul to be on another run, like a medical assist or something, and especially with somebody that's involving an elderly person. And Paul will see something going on in the house and he'll, after he takes care of the person, of course, he's not going to, you know, he's going to handle the emergency situation, but he'll take the effort to fix something for that person out of the goodness of his heart. He'll just, he'll do that.
Like bombs.
Yeah, he'll do that. And it's just, that's what Paul's about. His actions helped to make our police department a better place to work. And for that reason, Paul is our Officer of the Year 2017. And I would like to, on behalf of the department and the city, say congratulations, Paul.
Chief, how long, chief, how long has Paul been on here? I remember where he started. I mean...
2006.
He's been here, yeah, 11 years when she was born.
11 years, yeah. I thought it was about 10 years.
I don't see it at midnight, because now I see the gray hair. Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Once I started working midnights, it went gray.
I see.
I see him on midnights, and he is great. He's just great.
It helps him blend in in the midnight shift. Also on that, aside with that award, he'll also have a gold bar to be, to put on his uniform. In fact, there it is right there. So, he can wear that proud. So, if you see it, you'll know that that's our Officer of the Year wearing that gold bar. The next award that we're going to present tonight is a department citation. A department citation is given to someone that goes, handles a, with, one of the things, which tonight would be, we have two officers that are going to receive a department citation. It's because they handled a run that was involving personal risk to themselves and acted brave in going forward to it. And they handled it, handled the call great, and because of it, a violent criminal was taken off the street. So, I'd like to have Paul come back up and Officer Steve Haley. On Sunday, October 29, 2017, at approximately 11:50 PM, the two midnight shift here officers, as you can see, there's another gray look here. Steve Haley and Paul Dyer were working the midnight shift in the city of Claussen at the time, at about 10:00 to 12:00, when Troy Dispatch reported a armed robbery in progress up at the Kona, at the Kona Grill off of Beaver. The dispatch advised that it was, that it was in progress, because they could hear gunshots. The suspect was heard yelling, where is it? And indicating to the dispatch that there was a robbery in progress. They could hear it. And they last said that the subject was heading toward the rear of the restaurant and toward the manager's office. So, Paul was, first arrived on the scene, he positions his car on the south side of the Kona Grill, which runs along Beaver. And he takes a position, he comes in dark, takes up a position to monitor the restaurant. Lo and behold, when Paul's standing there, there's an individual outside of the restaurant wearing a dark trench coat, carrying a duffel bag and something in his arm, but at that time, you couldn't identify what that was. It later turned out to be a shotgun, a sawed-off shotgun. Paul yelled at the individual to stop and identified himself as a police officer. The subject initially started to duck down in some bushes and then took off on foot across the lot. Paul, being the young fellow he is, jumped over a bush and landed on the hard asphalt, causing an injury to himself to apprehend the guy. The guy fled. At that time, when he was running, Paul's calling this out, Steve Haley's the next to arrive, and he gets him as he's crossing across Main Street. At that time, the cavalry's there, everybody converges. These guys handled themselves with professionalism and got this guy into custody. The bag, the bag that the guy was carrying contained a big satchel full of money that he took. They found the shotgun there. Because of the testimony of identification, we could put the gun where it was at. So, the subject was arrested for armed robbery and taken off the street. And for that, we're very proud of these guys. And for that reason, they are being awarded a department citation tonight. And it's my pleasure to congratulate them on their efforts.
You've got to snuggle up a little bit.
Yeah, Steve. It's like we're on midnights.
Come on over. Get a good one.
Good job.
Thank you.
And then again, the department citation is a blue, white, blue bar for each one of the officers to wear on their uniform, as well as a certificate that they got. The next, the next award tonight to be announced is a commendation for four individuals. Darrell Adams, doesn't look like he can make it tonight. Lieutenant Scott Servello. Paul Dyer. The, the award board received a recommendation for a commendation for Officer Darrell Adams, Officer Paul Dyer, Detective Lieutenant Scott Servello, and myself for actions taken on May 20, 2017, early in the morning, 4:20 in the morning. Officers Adams and Dyer, again on the midnight shift, got sent over on Hendrickson on a report of a suicidal subject inside the house. The officers handled the scene great. They, those two officers coordinated some Troy officers were there. They set up a perimeter. They established some limited communication with the individual to keep them calm during that time until additional help could come. So, Scott and I both got called that morning, and that morning actually was the morning of the golf outing. So, we were hopeful that this wasn't one of those ones that would last all day long. So, Detective Lieutenant Servello got ahold of the individual and talked to him at length while we were all kind of doing different things at the scene to calm him down, and finally persuaded the individual to come out of the house without harming himself and without anybody getting hurt. It's no fanfare, but great work by everybody involved. Everybody did what they were supposed to at the scene, and if everybody wasn't there doing the great work they were doing, it might have had a different outcome. So, for that reason, these individuals are getting a commendation for a job well done on that May 20, 2017, on Hendrickson.
For some reason, it didn't load up there.
This is William Peach here, who's going to be receiving a civilian award we haven't met. Mr. Peach, on June 6, 2017, at approximately 9:58 in the evening, Claussen officers were dispatched to what looked to be a domestic violence in progress in the area of 14 Mile Road and Bywood. There was a report that there was a female chasing after a male and screaming. The officers responded, and when they got to the area of 14 and Bywood, nobody was there but Mr. Peach. Mr. Peach, William, Mr. William Peach directed, then the officer stuck around, told the officers, hey, that rolling domestic is now down at 14 and Crooks. I'll take you to him. So, he took the time, saw that there was a problem. He and his wife, his wife Courtney, who's can't be here tonight, they assisted the officers in identifying the vehicle and the two subjects. They also observed the vehicle driving down 14 Mile Road, and it turned out the driver was a drunk driver third offense. They stayed around, they provided witness statements, they identified the driver as far as, to make sure they're driving, because our officers didn't witness it, so we were going on what the citizen complained about and what they wrote in their statement. After the fact, the subject was determined to be drunk driving. He was arrested and taken into custody. But then, Mr. Peach came to the exam for it, did an excellent job testifying, and because of his testimony being so good and so rock solid, the subject pled guilty as charged at exam. So, on behalf of the Claussen Police Department, I want to say thank you, Mr. Peach, for helping us to keep, get a drunk driver off the street that could have possibly killed somebody that night. Thank you very much.
The only thing else I have to add is that it was my pleasure tonight to represent everybody as well as, you know, the department. We got a bunch of guys that do great things every day. This is a sampling of some of the great work that our guys do. And, I don't know, I'm proud of them. So, thank you.
They're a great group. I just want to add, they're just a pleasure to have in the city and really have engaged with all the, with the community. I know many play, have a baseball mitt in their cars and play catch with the kids at the parks and have developed relationships with my son and his friends, and it's really, really nice, and it makes a big difference in a community like this. So, thank you very much. Unfortunately, under new business, the next item is consideration of a resolution approving the authorizing, authorizing the plan to enter into an installment purchase agreement pursuant to Act 99 of the Public Acts of Michigan of 1933, as amended for the purpose of financing the cost of the Pierce Enforcer Puck Pumper and Volvo front loader for the city of Claussen. The city of Claussen and our budgets is, in order for us to make these large capital expenditures, is looking to finance these items.
Your Honor, I move the resolution approving the authorizing, approving the authorization, authorizing, what are we doing here?
Authorizing.
The plan to enter into the installment purchase agreement pursuant to Act 99 of the Public Acts of Michigan, 1933, as amended for the purpose of financing the cost of the Pierce Enforcer PUC Pumper and a Volvo front loader for the city of Claussen be approved, and to authorize the city manager and city clerk to publish the request for proposal.
Support.
Support.
Is there anything you'd like to add, Mr. Pollack, in regard to this agreement and purchases?
Yeah, we will, we'll ask for five, seven, and 10-year rates from lending institutions, and then we'll recommend the rate that makes the most sense. We may end up with a five-year or a seven-year. It'll come down to what the rates are, if it makes the most sense to do seven or 10 years, that's what we'll do. If the five-year rate ends up being significantly lower, then we'll recommend that as well. But within the budget each year and the five-year capital, I always have an outlay of principal and interest for our debt purchases. And Act 99 allows us the ability to finance this equipment. And we utilized it, in my 17 years here, we've utilized it quite a bit. And it comes in very handy because the interest rates are very good. So, I think the total amount will be $715,000 that we finance. And the payments will fit within, actually a little bit under the budget, because the items that we're, one, we've already purchased, and that's the front loader, but we just have to pay for it now. And then the fire truck that the chief presented tonight as well, this will allow us to purchase and finance those.
And the other questions for Mark? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Milan?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is the discussion of our National League of Cities Service Line Warranties Contract.
Number eight, Madam Mayor.
Receive and file.
Let me back up there to number eight. Consideration of receiving and filing the July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017 Comprehensive Annual Financial Audit. This evening, we were presented with the audit by our auditors, and the good news was that we are consistently addressing the problems and doing what we can with the limited resources that we have.
Mayor, I move the July 1st, 2016 to June 30th, 2017 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the City of Claussen be received and filed with the city clerk.
Second.
Any additional questions or comments that any would like to make regarding the audit? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Milan?
Yes.
Well, now, let's move on to number nine, the discussion of the National League of Cities Service Line Warranties Contract. This item was postponed at our last meeting, and maybe Mr. Kingsept and Mr. Pollack, you could let us know what you found out in regard to our contract and what our options are and what the options are for the citizens.
Well, in your contract that exists, you have 90 days notice requirement. We approved it April 2014, so you have enough time, if you want to terminate, to send the letter out. It's rather indefinite as far as the consequences. Now, I know that Mark called to see what the impact would be, and I don't know if he...
I did. I did send counsel late email, which you might not have got a chance to read, but they did say they honor the contracts that are in good standing going forward if the contract is canceled, so they would honor the contracts in place.
So, that will be the case. And if you terminate, then you won't have any publication going out to the residents sponsoring the program or even touting the program or even mentioning the program. The downside possibly is that if services are required from independent contractors, they may be higher, might be lower, all depends on the market. But at least you won't be involved in it. This program, just for clarity, was sponsored through the National League of Cities. And as you both all know, that both state and national organizations representing cities, it's a common thing to get programs for members at a discount. Of course, they get a royalty off of it as well, but it's to provide benefit, benefits that might be less costly on an individual basis. But it's a business decision from your standpoint, whether you want to continue with this. It doesn't put you in any liability, although I will say some of the language, if I represented a homeowner, I could say, you know, "You all sponsored it, and I relied on that." But again, you have to have the nexus of some overt act more than just a documentation. And so, I wouldn't be too concerned about it, but it is in the agreement. So, it's a business decision and your choice on whether you want to continue it, renegotiate it so that the 50, what is it, 50 cents per month is higher, or, you know, just terminate it and that's it.
Mark, a big part of my concern was the letter and how it appeared. And the brief scanning of your email that I saw that they were willing to make some concessions to that.
Yeah.
And I think seeing an example of that new approach may, you know, may make a difference.
Okay. I can send, they agreed on the partnering of the logo. In other words, it would be the city seal and their logo as well. They agreed to the language changes as well, because I know there was concern that residents were getting the letter and feeling that they were required to sign up for the coverage. They did change the language, agreed to change the language where it says, the very first sentence, it says that it's an optional coverage. And then, what they listed was, as a homeowner, what your requirement would be should you need repairs. And that part, I thought, was confusing. And they did agree to say, "Look, we'll move that into the, I guess, the body of the letter itself to say that if something should break, your responsibility would replace the line or the sewer line." So, they did agree to make the changes. They eliminated the mayor's name and signature from the letter as well, because again, I think other communities around, they're trying to listen to what makes sense for the program. And if, again, the confusion created was the one that we wanted to try and eliminate. And then, the number of letters written was the other item they addressed, because they were sending out, if you already had the coverage, they were sending it, and some people were saying, "Well, didn't I just pay for that?" So, another thing they did is if you have both sewer and water coverage, you'll get a letter at the beginning of each year. If you have a source to pay it each year, they'll just acknowledge what that source is, or if you wish to change it. And then, the other thing would be is if you have the water coverage and you don't have the sewer, they would just send the sewer line out. And again, trying to make the letter make more sense to individuals so that they don't feel responsible or required to sign up for it. And then, statistically, I did print this out, and I think I put that in the email, but in case you didn't see it, we currently have 787 enrollments between the water and sewer warranty, line warranties. And to date, they've had 206 claims filed against those 787. So, you can see a lot of people, percentage-wise, have taken advantage of the program. And they have said before that if someone signs up for the program, within a month or two, has a line replaced, and then cancels the coverage, they can do that. They don't, they don't ask them why, they don't come back and put any pressure on them. And the other issue, I talked to them today, was that they really pride themselves in the customer service, and if they have any issues whatsoever that the resident's not pleased with, they will address that directly with them and get that resolved. And to my knowledge, I don't know that anyone hasn't had something that they feel is unresolved questions, comments. So, the program itself has worked very well. I know communities around us that have added recently, Beverly Hills, I asked their city manager, and he said the program's working great for them, too. So, it is, I think that idea, and I understand Councilmember Albrecht's position on this, I completely respect what he's saying. But it's the, I guess, the marriage of the National League of Cities with this program that they make the requirement of the city's seal being on there to say, "This is a legitimate program, and we do endorse it," or "We agree to it," and we did sign an agreement for it, gives some residents the peace of mind to say, "Well, okay, it must be a legitimate service." And again, it's worked well for us, and it certainly is something that I would like to see continue, but I'm with John. If it's a business decision of counsel, if you're not comfortable with the program, we have the ability to say, you know, "We're given a 90-day notice to exit," so...
Do we know that if we were to cancel it, if they would raise the cost to the people participating, or we don't know?
They don't, they wouldn't commit to that one way. They did say they would honor the existing agreements, is what they did.
So, we don't know what change it might have on the people that are participating.
Yeah. And if you do want to continue, and I hate to stick my nose in this, but I read the contract again, and I don't know whether these provisions were addressed, but there are a couple of provisions on page three. Is this really a letter from the city? And another, why is my city sending me the letter? And on four, why is the city endorsing the program? Why is the city working with service line warranties? And also, what is in this program for the city? And then, there's the last one under warranty products on page five. I would prefer to reword those, if not exclude them, because it does dispel with a little more certainty, less involvement of the city, and no endorsement, which you are specifically doing now. And again, this is a product that you can tout as being one presented by the National League of Cities. You're a member of the National League of Cities, and this is a program that you're offering to them, period. So, I mean, if they would make those changes, if you feel that you want to go forward with it, and we presented that, then I think that would be a cleanup that might be satisfactory to you. But again, it's a business decision, as your call.
So, if we can get them to rework and reword it, we're okay with that. I mean, I'm okay, I have this, and I've had it for years, and a lot of people I know have this. And it's wonderful, it's, you know, it's worked well, and the price is right, and I've never had a problem with it.
Well, the good thing is you have a strength, the strength of a very large organization touting this.
Right.
I mean, NLC has a tremendous reputation, so, you know, this vendor is not going to do anything, it's going to lose that sponsorship. But I would change some of the content, it might lessen the confusion.
Yeah.
How directly you were involved. That's your call.
I think, for me, some of it boils down to a philosophy at the core of it. For me, I am, I believe that we should not be renting out the city's seal, the city letterhead, the city address to a private company for use in their advertising. If we pull out of this contract, we don't prevent this company from continuing to advertise in Claussen. I wouldn't be surprised if their rates drop a little, because they don't have to pay us for, I mean, we're getting, we're getting a cut of every contract. And I just, I don't like it. It's a philosophical thing for me. And I, this is no commentary on the product, about its effectiveness, about its value. I've heard many testimonies that it is a good product, and that's great. There are a lot of good products out there for a lot of different things. But I, none of them should receive, no private entity should receive the endorsement of a public entity like this, in my opinion.
Do we really have to put our seal on it and our name on it?
Yeah.
I mean, I didn't like it when it first came out, because it did, everybody asked me what the city was doing, why we're doing this.
Well, it sounds like they're kind of, they're imposing their seal on top of it, so that's why, because I'd like to see what that looks like and see if it takes some ambu...
Ambiguity.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, again, I don't know if that's going to change...
Right.
It wouldn't change my opinion, of course, but, you know, I'm one of...
And I can say, this is not an unusual thing. I mean, I was intimately involved in this type of approach with the State Bar of Michigan, where we began, we were not getting money for services that were provided at all. And they've made, the Board of Commissioners on a recommendation to myself and another person on a committee, adopted the policy that they were going to get money. And believe me, that was very, that decision had its tossbacks to me. I was condemned readily, because they now had to pay a large amount of money for the sole service they were providing, members of the State Bar. And that started back in the 70s, and it's just gone on forward with all organizations. And I'm not dispelling the legitimacy of your position, other than that's a trend that has just, you know, continued, so that these organizations have another revenue source to meet their commitments and keep their expense down to the members.
And this, this does incur a cost to the city, this program does. It takes resources at City Hall. If there are any return decenders, our address is the return address. I know members of the staff here at City Hall get questions about this, they get phone calls about it, they get people coming up here in person asking about it. So, you know, it does take resources. And so, it would seem that if we were to allow the seal to be used, and our resources to be used to support a private entity, that we should receive some remuneration for it. But I'm against it wholeheartedly.
Okay.
Would they consider drafting a new letter, omitting the city logo, and just putting a statement in such as, "The city of Claussen, although not sponsoring this program, supports this program, finds a value to it for some of our residents," something along that line, that would not be like a stickler? And I've read the letter, I get it every three months, I think, and I'm not confused by it. I understand other people are, and I can see where they could be. I'm not 100% on the same page with Matt. I feel like if you can offer a good service for someone within the community, and if someone has it and uses it and saves a lot of money, I've talked to people who've had to spend a lot of money to have that line, that portion of line repaired on their home, and that can be devastating to people. So, if, you know, you have proactive people who like the idea of an insurance, and they're willing to sign their name and submit their credit card to pay it every three months or every year, I'd like to offer the opportunity as well.
And again, I, yeah, I don't, I'm not saying that this is not a valuable product. I'm not saying that at all, right? And by us not entering into this contract, it does not prevent anybody from getting this product. They would still be able to contact these folks and get a warranty for their lines.
Do we know that for a fact?
It would be some form of this, I believe. Their whole push to get the city logo and originally the mayor's signature was the, what they called copycats that do offer the same type of service out there, that we don't know necessarily, are they reputable? Do they have, you know, insured licensed people representing them to go out and do the work? Their whole sales pitch on this, and it was, it was a sales pitch, and I agree with Matt that they're, you know, in essence, we are renting our logo for a feedback toward this. But their whole push to get the city's support behind it, and the logo being that, was to say, "This is a legitimate program. We do offer a very good service, we're customer-friendly." It's that whole idea that in order to offer the rates that we do, we get the support of the community behind us, and then that makes, I guess, maybe a piece of mind...
It's legitimacy. It provides legitimacy, too.
Yeah, the legitimacy, and the fact that it is, because we did, in the beginning, we got a lot of the calls, because they did get the copycat letters out. And we were telling people, we had copies posted in the building department, "It's the one with the city's logo and mayor's signature, that's the one that we're endorsing."
I don't like the signature. I never liked the signature. I just feel like that makes it seem like it's actually a city-endorsed product.
And I think they heard, they heard that loud and clear and said, "We'll eliminate the mayor's signature." The seal being the, you know, now it would be, if you get a letter with the city's seal on it, along with National League of Cities, "That's the one we endorse." And that was the issue for them. And again, I can ask them, but he did indicate to me last week that the city's seal would still be a requirement for the contract.
It could also, perhaps it could just not be like a letterhead seal, you know what I mean? Like, why they have it now, it's very prominent, it looks like letterhead. So, if it weren't displayed as a letterhead and it was just incorporated somewhere in a less obvious place, just to provide that legitimacy and not to provide like a stamp of approval, if that makes any sense.
So, it would be worth our while, is the next step, to have maybe a representative come to a meeting and answer some of these questions, instead of, you know, if someone were to come here and we could ask some of these things directly to them?
We could, but I don't, I think that...
We could, but I don't, I think that our biggest issue is that letter. And so if they're willing, at least that's my issue on it. So it depends on how the new, a new drafted letter would look.
If you ask the questions, Mark, you'll see how valuable it is to them, right? They're going to do as much or little as they want to maintain their connection.
Right. Yeah, they obviously want us to stay on board. So again, answering the questions, and then to say, is there, is there something that would alleviate Matt's concern, to where he would say, under these circumstances, then I'd be okay with it. But again, I completely understand where he's coming from. But from there end, I understand as a business, in order to sell this product to residents and what it represents, and again, he's, Matt's not once said, I don't like the program or the effectiveness of the program. It's the fact that we're selling, or leasing, I guess, renting the city's seal for that company to provide the service that they do.
It's almost like, wonder if you kind of, to say that Claussen is a member of this particular organization, and that gives it the legitimacy.
And that's, I think John is leaning toward-
It's not so much our letterhead that's-
Because it could be all of those logos.
Endorsing it. It's the fact that we are a member of this organization-
Right.
-that is backing this particular group.
Right. And again, and that's certainly something I will push with them, to say, look, it would make our council comfortable with staying on board with your program if these things can happen. And John has concerns with the language itself in the contract. If they're willing to address all that, and say, yeah, we'll still provide the program, then I think that at least allows us an avenue to keep the program intact and allow the residents to have it. You know, severing the relationship, you know, he's absolutely right. We could allow people to go on their own to get this, and they could. There are services out there. And I think their endorsement, and the strength of the support of the National League of Cities makes this, makes sure that this is a legitimate service, and that's the issue they're dealing with. And again, I think they want the residents to be clear, I guess, and comfortable that the city endorses this. And by that respect, it's a reputable program, and that's the assurances they have. But I will ask these questions and see if they say, you know, absolutely no, we must have the city's seal, then I can let council know that. And then the changes to the letter, I can send you. What he suggested that they do, and again, kind of partnering up the seal as well, and then strong language, because I said that in the beginning, is the endorsement of the National League of Cities is important to us. It's probably important to the residents. It's important to council. Are you willing to send a letter that maybe doesn't include, or maybe just says, "City of Claussen," doesn't include our seal, and continue the program, so that we're not, in essence, renting our seal for your benefit or for the program's benefit?
Matt, are you opposed to the logo being used in any form?
Yeah, I mean, when I receive an envelope from an advertiser, and I've been involved kind of peripherally in marketing before and for a while, but I receive an envelope with the city's seal on it, and as a government official, I feel compelled to open it, right? And digest its contents. When it's an advertisement for a private company, that really irks me, one. I think it's deceptive at best. And sure, what private company wouldn't want the stamp of approval of a government entity on their product, right? I'm sure there are realtors who would say, look, I'm legitimate. Why won't you endorse me? A restaurant, or a jeweler, you know? I know somebody has saved a lot of money with this jeweler. We should endorse them as a city. And from the perspective of the national, or the service line warranties of America, as far as they're concerned, their marketing can continue. They can tout their A-plus rating with the Better Business Bureau, and their endorsement by the National League of Cities, right? They have all of these things. And so to say that this, that consumers of this product would not be able to be educated about this product by any other means, I think is, it's a little disingenuous, but I think it sells people short a little bit in being able to do this research as well. If you go out and Google search, or, you know, index search, "a service line warranty" or "a water line warranty," these guys are up near the top. And, I don't know, my mind probably can't be changed on this. I'm just really dead set against it, but.
I guess for me, I'd like to see what proposal that they come back. What, you know, what type of concessions are they willing, you know, I'm looking, what extreme concessions are they willing to give up and still send mailers to the Claussen residents? If they want to send some sort of a proposal back, then-
Sure.
-we could put it back on the agenda and vote on that proposal that they've presented to us.
All right. I'll get those answers and put that back before you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I guess it's time to pay the bills.
Madam Mayor, pay the bills.
Second.
Were there any questions on the bills? Roll call, please.
We actually have bills this time. Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Malone?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
City attorneys report.
No report, Madam Mayor.
Oh, wow. Two weeks in a row. City managers report.
That's John's way of saying he has nothing to do.
Yeah, right.
Or he wants to get on the roads, because he has a long drive home.
I just, quick update, the MRF on Coolidge is open and operating. They had a couple of minor glitches over the first week, but we were, our recycling will be going back to the facility and processed. They're still working out with advanced disposal, the trash removal to the landfills as well. They're, in fact, I believe tomorrow's recycling committee meeting, which Doug will be attending, they're going to give them a tour of the MRF. And as time goes on, they'll probably offer up more tours to the Sacra communities. And again, I would recommend that, when you get an opportunity to do that. The Saturday collection for drop-off for residents will continue the rest of this month. As a board, we suggested to Jeff McKean, the general manager, that they go back to the regular hours, which we believe they'll do starting sometime in February. It might wait till after the board meeting, till we officially tell them, we'd like them to reopen. They were finding that it was working out better for them to just hold the drop-offs on Saturday. But, you know, as residents know, they don't necessarily want to hold everything and wait and drop it off on Saturday, and you're going to have some longer lines, because everyone's going on the same day. So our recommendation will be that they go back to the old schedule, and you can take things there at any time, while they're open, while the facility's open. They are looking at maybe alternate locations within the facility to make it easier for drop-off, to avoid the traffic coming through for recycling. So they are weighing ideas to make it better and make it easier for residents to drop things off, household waste and hazardous waste, especially in computers, things of that nature. So that will likely go back to the old method. It just might be relocated within the facility, around the facility. But we're happy to have that open. And like I said, at some point, you know, I'll get some options. If you want to go as a council, or if you want to go individually, I'll try and set up a review of the facility. But again, everything we've heard, I think it's going to be a really, really state-of-the-art, cool recycling facility, single stream.
Mr. Pellic.
Yep.
You use the acronym MRF? Is that what you were saying?
Yeah, the MRF. It's the, what do they call it? The-
First, I've heard it.
Something Recycling Facility. I forget. Am I a civil recycling facility, maybe? MRF. Yeah, it's just, it's like police and armed services. They have all their acronyms. And we use it so often, then it's, when's the MRF going to open?
MRF.
It's the recycling facility itself. But yeah, it's exciting. Again, it was an expensive proposition, but we think, you know, in time, it will be a revenue generator for all the Sacra communities. In fact, they've already had people look at the recycling product, and a lot of people are impressed with it. One of the concerns was, is China is putting more requirements on the recycling they're accepting overseas, and facilities like this will actually make it cleaner recycling. So the bundles they get will be a lot more valuable, because they won't have to deal with so much, I think he used the term residue. So it'll be really, really cool. And then the other thing was, is the aerial truck will probably be out next week. Doug told me today, taking the garland off the light poles. So you'll see the aero truck, and obviously, do your best to avoid them. But that should happen next week. Hopefully, we'll get some decent weather to do that. And I think that's all I have.
Mark, I noticed, I believe it's Walper, there's two Christmas trees that are out in the easement. And I'm guessing that they were looking for the DPW to pick them up, and I'm wondering if the DPW has not, because they're in a Christmas tree bag. And if that's the case, we should probably let them know that-
Okay. I asked Doug yesterday about trees, and he said that he's sending them out on Mondays. They'll go back again on Monday with the chipper next Monday. Yeah, if it is in a bag, please remove it from the bag, because they actually take it and chip it. The other trucks that they're actually throwing them into to take them back to the facility and then ship them, they'll do as well, because they don't, they can't get the chipper everywhere necessarily in the day. But they do have another truck that goes out and throws them in the back of the truck to take them and ship them. But I'll ask, if somebody does have them in a bag, it won't be a matter of, well, we're not going to take it because it's in a bag. I think Doug will let them know. Or, I mean, he may even say, we'll throw it in the back of the truck, and we'll remove the bag.
Okay.
So that somebody's not stuck with the tree. But he did say, if they stay there after they stop, eventually, the waste truck will take it. But obviously, we'd prefer they be chipped.
They've been there for weeks.
Okay. And it's on Walper, you said?
I think it's Walper, Woodpile Street. There's two of them.
I will ask Doug, and again, if poor Barb's been out, this is going into her second week of being ill. She got a really bad flu, so she's been out. So she hasn't been out to do enforcement. But I will ask Doug to, if the resident, if the issue is, if we're not picking them up because they're in bags, I'll have him either notify them, just remove the bags, or take them, and we'll remove the bags. So.
Thank you. Anything else? Any unfinished business we need to discuss?
I think I'm going to ask, Mark, by our next meeting, I suspect the steakhouse will have a recycle bin?
Yeah, I did talk with Colette, who works at the Sacra facility. She was going to reconnect, try to reconnect with the steakhouse. And then we did get a request of a business here on Main Street as well for commercial recycling. And now that the facility's open again, I think we'll probably see a bigger push for commercial recycling. People that are interested to try and get them the bin. The issue then becomes the pickup and making sure that if it's dringoli, that they pick it up with regular pickup. Commercial, the issue is always, there's a different schedule for commercial pickup, so they have to make sure that they get them scheduled for a recycling pickup. But I do see, think you're going to see a big increase in a push for commercial recycling, because in a lot of cases, commercial recycling, restaurant especially, has more recycling than a homeowner would.
True.
Glass and plastic and cardboard. So there is going to be a push, you know, I think, likely Sacra-wide, community-wide, to provide more commercial recycling. And then for us, again, the defraying of the cost is the credits we get back for the recycling. So general manager McKean looks at things differently. And that's what he said. I'd rather get them on board and not charge them additionally if we can swing it, because the credits we're going to get back for it are going to offset the cost. So she did, Colette did tell me that she would reach out to the steakhouse again. She was actually surprised. She said, I thought we had it worked out. And I said, we have council members that go there regularly, and they still don't have recycling. So she said, I will reach out to them again. I'll assist as well. In fact, if you have a number for me to call and talk to somebody who said we'd love to be in the recycling, could you give it to me? And I'll call them directly and make sure that that gets taken care of. Because she said, she was under the impression they were already being picked up. And I said, no, they don't even have a bin. So Colette said she would follow up on that. So yeah, if you give me who to talk to and the number, I'll call them directly and get involved myself, so that it gets taken care of.
When was the last conversation you had with Colette about that?
Last Wednesday, at our board meeting.
Are you going to follow up with her this week?
I will. Thank you. In fact, I'll call her tomorrow. Yeah.
Okay. On to new business. On January 22nd, at the library, there's a presentation about India by Jennifer Perkins. On the January 24th, we will have our joint meeting of council, planning, commission, and zoning board. And that will be here at City Hall Community Room, and I believe that's at 7:00. On February 2nd is the Athletic Boosters Euchre Tournament, and that's at the Knights of Columbus. Doors are open at 6:30, but the games start at 7:30. February 6th, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan will be discussed here at City Hall. February 7th, Quarter Mania. It's a senior all-night party fundraiser, and I understand it's a lot of fun. Doors open at 6:00, events at 7:00. In addition, on Super Bowl, February 4th, Save Your Returnables. Claussen seniors will be picking up returnables on Saturday, February 10th, as a fundraiser to help pay for their all-night party. In addition, we've got the Bowl-a-thon coming up. That's the police department's scholarship fundraiser. And the deadline to sign up for that is February 23rd. We just wanted to give you the heads up that you might want to get it on your calendar. And I want to make sure that we thank our DPW, who does an amazing job all the time, and they've really had a long stretch of roads to salt and plow the past week or so. So thank you very much, because it's just a great job. And I know city council gets to enjoy all the compliments of you guys' hard work. So thanks again.
Did you see the quilt one? I can't recall if you saw the quilt.
There's one behind your iPad there.
Quilts?
One behind your iPad.
Melody wanted you to mention that one. I think, I believe it's tomorrow.
You know, I had this on my calendar, and I couldn't find any of the information on it. Caring for Your Quilts is Wednesday, January 17th, so tomorrow night at 6:30. And it's sponsored by the Claussen Historical Society. Please RSVP at 248-588-9169. The flyer here says, "Did you inherit an old quilt? Did you make an heirloom? Would you like to pass it on to the next generation? Learn how to clean, repair, store, and display your vintage quilts with quilt enthusiasts." Barb Lusk. Is that here, or is it over the-
It's at the museum.
It's at the museum. So-
I believe so.
Tomorrow night at 6:30. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. Anyone else? Well, let's move on to public discussion. Public discussion is open, and public discussion is now closed.
Madam Mayor, I move adjourned.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Malone?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Thank you, and have a great night.